Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Pokemoke City Mayor and Council Work Session. Today is Monday, October the, I'm sorry, today is Wednesday, October the fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. It is five thirty P M. Would you all stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and consider it a republic or which stands on my nation under God and invincible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Councilwoman McDonald, would you lead us in a quick prayer tonight?
Yes. God will thank you for this another day you blessed us, and we ask you for your guidance in all things. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. So, welcome again, everybody. We are here to review the bids for the Pokemoke City Community Community Center slash Pokemoke City Life Center. Ms. Matthews, did you want to come forward? My recommendation is that we start at every bid. If anybody has any questions, any comments or concerns, Councilman Holland made it clear that we wanted the public's input on this. Unfortunately, we did not see this, we did not see this circulated around Pokemoke City, but I did receive confirmation this morning that this was indeed on the news. While this is our first work session, I'm sure that it won't be our last because we are going through eleven bids. So, Ms. Matthews, if you would like to start with, was Becker Morgan the first one?
It was.
Okay, so please come, please come to the podium.
Give me one second. Becker Morgan.
We had eleven responsive bidders.
Mm-hmm, eleven bidders.
And again, how many people did we have show up at the, at your meeting?
Twenty-six, Melinda.
Twenty, somewhere between twenty-four and twenty-six.
Twenty, okay.
Twenty-four, twenty-six, yes.
So, Ms. Matthews, if you'd like to give us a brief synopsis, and then the council can jump in with their questions and their comments.
Okay, the first one is Becker Morgan.
I'm sorry, just as a reminder, we will not be voting on anything. We will only be operating on consensus.
So, one of the things that we looked at is the RFP and to see which, which proposals actually came in line with what we were requesting in the, in the proposal. And Becker Morgan, as far as the fees for our, sorry, you guys. It's a lot to go through.
If you'd like, I can start with my pros and cons.
Yes, go ahead.
So, when I was looking at, when we look at Becker Morgan, the one thing that we have to admit is that Becker, Becker Morgan is seasoned in our region for work. They have a great relationship with municipalities. I also liked how they separated the program, you know, they gave us an initial Phase One for the program and concept and schematic, schematic drawing for ninety, for seventy-nine thousand eight hundred and sixty-four. Then they did a Phase Two, which would have been design development and construction documents for two hundred ninety-two thousand seventy-nine dollars. One of my cons was that the all-in-cross through bidding and construction administration was unclear. If, it, we, I don't know if we were gonna have to do the bidding, or if it was going to be someone that they chose to outsource. Don't know if we would have wanted to be through that, within that process, if we would have been in that process at all or not. It was just, it was just left, it was just left unclear. And then I feel like when we talk about permits and exclusions and things like that, we would need a cost to really make a legitimate decision concerning it. Because I, I just feel like it was a lot left out. A lot of the, the, the pictures were nice, and the information that they provided was good. But I think that along with that, we still need a cost to where we're going, what we're trying to get to.
So, another thing with Becker Morgan, it's not really clear the construct, as far as the construction phase, whether or not that's the timeline from May of twenty-twenty-six to August twenty-twenty-seven, if that's the timeline of how long it will take to actually, to actually have the building up and running. And also, this is also based off of our original of three stories at approximately twenty-five thousand square feet.
And I, I don't think that they looked at the addendums that Melinda, that Melinda put together as the, as the process was going on. Are there any, any thoughts concerning Becker Morgan's proposal? Any other thoughts? So, Ms. Matthews, if I could make a suggestion to the body, I think that Becker Morgan should be on like our maybe list, where, because there are so many different, so many questions that need to be answered before we would have, be able to move forward into a contract with them, that we need to put them in a maybe category, not necessarily no, but not yes either.
Well, it sounds like there's some questions that need to be answered, and we should probably ask them.
And one of the questions that I actually had for Becker Morgan, it's one of my questions.
I'm not sure with each of these bidders, there'll be some follow-up questions.
Right. We just have to establish our contenders.
Yeah, the one question I have for Becker Morgan is whether or not the Phase One, Two, and Three are actually based off of the budget, or is it based off of the actual square footage? And that, and that's what's not clear in this proposal.
Say that again, Brandon.
Yes. So, in this proposal, what's not clear is whether or not the Phase One, Two, and Three fees are actually based on the actual square footage of the twenty-five thousand square feet, or whether or not it's actually based off of the, the actual budget.
I mean, because ultimately, if this is all we have to pay them, we could, the city could do it with its eyes closed. So, but it doesn't talk about permitting costs, and while, while it would be a city building, we still gotta follow the rules for everybody.
Mm-hmm. And also, another thing, I don't know if you guys noticed in this proposal, it actually doesn't give a, it only gives you the cost of the, the A and E fees. It does not give you the cost of the building cost itself. So, that's the, that's the main part that we're actually missing in this.
And Becker Morgan knows what they're doing. They've worked on several projects in Pokemoke already. And looking at their proposal, there's people on the board that are born and raised in Pokemoke that might be beneficial for us because they know this town, and they're the people, and they're the needs of the community.
They redid our police department.
They did Doc's side.
Police department. You had to bring that up. Sorry.
Ready to move to the next one?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
All right. The next one's gonna be David D. Quilling. So, with David D. Quilling, he actually does in this one, if you go page seventeen, if you're looking at the, the PDF. His schematic design phase is based off of the, the budget itself.
Page seventeen is a front profile for us.
Hold on. Give me one second.
It's, I think, I think you're, you're asking for us about a page fifteen.
Is it fifteen, scope of work? Mm-hmm, scope of work, sorry.
Well, fifteen is the fee proposal.
I wonder why our page numbers are different. Do you see Section Three, scope of work? I'm sorry, hold on, that's not right, that's.
Well, you find it. On page, on page fifteen, I realize that they included a traffic study
Study.
For twenty-two, for twenty-two thousand dollars. And I believe that we actually don't, we do need a traffic study, but not there.
Yeah.
Um, we do need a traffic study, but, but not there.
Well, it says if required, so.
But, but it's included in this final, in this final number. And what I did like was that six point five percent, it was only six point five percent for construction, which only totaled three, three hundred forty thousand, two hundred and sixty-five dollars. And then the remainder could be used to outfit and different things like that. I did like that. But I did not like that they used the term boutique, boutique size.
Yeah.
That don't sound like all five, all six of us could fit in that.
No, a lot of the, a lot of the architect, a lot of them actually asked about the traffic study only because you have the one-way going down Clark, and then the one-way coming back up second, and then whether or not there was gonna be a parking issue.
I mean, but we're talking about something for our community.
Indeed.
Who knows that those two streets are a one-way street?
Brandon, I see a scope of services on page twenty-seven.
Thank you. What was the page number again?
It's twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven.
Looks like it's on the letterhead.
Got it. Thank you. So, again, this one, this project, it's, it's also including the twenty-five thousand square feet. And I think with some of them, it's, they're just kinda just based it off of the square footage, and kinda like you said, Mayor did not really go back and re-look at the addendums that we did basing it off of the budget. So, while the, the A and E states that it's six and a half percent of the budget, but based off of this is saying that it's, it's based off approximately the twenty-five thousand square foot.
Five thousand square feet.
Twenty-five thousand square foot, sorry.
Also, another thing that I also liked about them is they included the full services through bidding and construction, construction administration. The weekly, the weekly site visit thing was kinda, you know, that'll be nice, but who's going to, who's the city going to designate to be there with them? It's, it, it's not just an hour of your time, it's, you know.
So, we would literally, each week would have to do a walkthrough, or we would need to break that down, how often we would like to do a site visit with them to make sure that everything would be in line.
And who, who's gonna be responsible for taking those meeting minutes? Because that's what was covered.
Yeah.
In their proposal, while it is Melinda's, Melinda's job to take meeting minutes for us and the committees, it's not necessarily her job to take meeting minutes for builders and contractors and things like that.
Now, I can say when we have other meetings with our contractors, they do their own minutes.
Right.
They, they do their own meeting minutes, and they provide them at the very next meeting.
And they were gonna do a lot of subcontracting. So, I feel like there does need to be, we, we need to have buy-in on who they're subcontracting to. Not necessarily to say yes or no, but to know, very similar with the Sipron Project, where things have been subcontracted out, and messages from City Hall are going to the actual contractor, to the subcontractor, and things are getting lost in the shuffle. And we're getting, our email, our inboxes are getting bombarded with questions from citizens about things that we made clear that should have been covered, or people should know, because we had experienced it with Sip Phase One.
Any discussion? The next one is gonna be Fisher. Now, Fisher, if you go to, I believe it's sixteen of your PDF, scope of work. So, the one thing that I do like about, about Fisher, they do talk about having us stay into budget constraints, which is something that we'll need to do in order to be able to reconcile to the budget. With having a budget reconciliation that actually keeps us in line and keeps us within our budget, and that way, we can make sure we don't go over cost. And one thing that they also did on page seventeen, they did break out their schematic design based on the, the, the actual budget, not the twenty-five thousand square foot.
The only thing I, well, there's a couple things that I didn't like. I didn't like that they never really gave us a total lump sum.
No, they did not.
But, on the other hand, I did like the interim price checks that they were doing. Like, you've gotta pay X amount of dollars by this point, then X amount of dollars by this point, then X amount of dollars by this point. But they never gave us a total.
An actual total at all. And that's kinda one of the things that we need for the grant application, is to show some type of cost estimate, and without a cost estimate, that, that doesn't really, really help us. Now, while Fisher has done many projects here in Pokemoke, as you can see on twenty-eight.
A proposal without a, a cost effect to it is.
Yeah, it's nothing.
It's a non, non.
Mm-hmm. Any discussion with Fisher?
The buildings are beautiful.
They are.
Yeah, I agree.
Our next one is gonna be George Miles and Burr, GMB. As we all know, that GMB is responsible for our SIP project and other projects here in Pokemoke City. And with that, because they have done so many projects here in Pokemoke City, they are familiar with the, the layout of Pokemoke and some of the needs, wetlands, environmental. And if we go to the project schedule, this is one thing I actually did like, they actually break it down all the way, all the way down from the kickoff date, grant application, and even down to the Mayor and Council's approval, which they have about May fourth of twenty-twenty, of twenty-twenty-six, so about thirty weeks.
It was thirty weeks. I really liked that they were like, from after we finish the schematics, you'll be ready to go in thirty weeks.
And then, then on page thirty-eight is our fee proposal, schematic fees, designs, design development phase and construction phase. And when we talk about it in terms of just the A and E fees, they are one of the lower of the A and E fees.
Mayor, what I didn't like was they excluded bidding and procurement.
Procurement.
Which could, so, the question for them ultimately is, are they gonna handle the bidding and procurement on their end, or is it something that the city's gonna have to handle? Well, I guess I should ask Andrew this question. He's sitting right here. So, Andrew, in this process, I'm sorry, I forgot you were down there. In this process of us getting this community center built, by law, do we have to handle procurement and bidding? Or would that be the responsibility of the company that we select? Because if we have to handle it, of course, it has to come into a mayor and council meeting, and we'll basically be, you know, they, they may come and say, hey, we, we need this now, and we don't need for another three weeks, depending on how it goes.
For like subcontractors?
Right. So, if they're subcontracting out, is it something that they would have to bring to us with the bids? Or is it something that they would just be able to subcontract without even letting us know?
So, like, usually, their entire project envisions like what the cost is going to be. And then, your agreement would be that they can utilize whoever, like, they're gonna hire electrician to do the electrical work. You're not gonna hire your own independent electrician. They're gonna hire somebody else to do drywall. And so, with these types of large projects, there's a general contractor who then has like a subcontractor, who then hires a sub under that, who could hire a sub under that. That's all within their original general contract scope. If they're to build the center, then they're gonna build it pursuant to the schematics, but they're gonna hire who they need to do the work.
And generally, they all have subcontractors that they, they use for same projects.
So, I'm just making sure that we don't, we don't have to approve any of the subcontracted work.
Delay the process.
So, that's your fault over there. Well, we don't wanna be burdened by that.
They should also be the ones paying all the subcontractors.
And, and quite frankly, it's not what we do.
Mm-hmm.
I'm just making sure nobody doesn't try to ring a bell on us for.
We, uh, we, you know, we hire them for their building and their architectural engineering expertise and their building management. Uh, and that's, you know, who we select, who have to be responsible for those things.
Any additional questions or concerns about GMB?
Who's next?
Jonathan Selway Architects. Right from the start, the page four, project summary, they already start out by saying, based on our budget, it's only eight thousand, the building can only be eight thousand square feet. But they do give a budget of a twenty-four thousand square foot. So, we kinda got a look at from the beginning, is eight thousand square feet big enough for, for our needs here in Pokemoke City?
I do like that he was, he was attentive to the addendums.
Mm-hmm.
What I didn't like is that the total fee and inclusion was not included.
No. I feel like that was missed for a lot of the proposals. And there's, there is a timeline, again, but from November twenty-twenty-six, is that twelve months after? So, we're talking November twenty-twenty-seven?
They have a lot of beautiful buildings as well.
Mm-hmm.
A lot of them are very modern designed, and, I don't know, I don't know what, if you want modern, or if you wanna try to fit it in with the structures around it, or what are you gonna do for after?
Well, that is what I liked about him. He went in and he looked at, we've got the bridge, well, he looked at the Bridge, Willow Street, Maple Street, Saint Mary's Church, the Discovery Center, the Community Garden Bethany, First Baptist, City Hall, the townhouses, the post office, the Sturgis Museum, Market Street Salem, Pitts Creek Presbyterian, and the Marvel. So, they went and looked at them, and more than likely, it will be something that combines all of them if they were, if, if they, if they were who we awarded. But I think too much to your point, it also would be nice to see what the library is gonna look like.
Well, that's what I was about to say, is I almost feel like they should resemble or have the same design kinda as the library, because there are gonna be two new buildings around the same time, and they should be in Pokemoke for, for a long time. So, it'd be like the new start of, of.
Well, these people definitely are mimicking what the, because the library is supposed to be, you know, upscale. So, I do know that part. So, if, if that's what you're looking for in that aspect, this, they definitely do the same type of thing.
I'd also like that they had a project team.
Yes.
But it was not a cost for the project, the different, you know, the architectural and planning services, landscaping, architecture. And that was something else I liked about them. They were willing to handle the landscape. Civil engineers, structural engineers, mechanical engineers. It didn't give us a price for.
No, it doesn't break, no, it doesn't break that out at all.
But they're a smaller practice.
Mm-hmm.
And because of that, they might be more receptive to when y'all pick up the phone and call them, you'll probably be able to get an answer.
Sir. And also, just, just looking at, going back to that, if you look at it, their building cost is based off of three hundred dollars per square foot. So, we're, if we're looking, if we, if we actually went back and said, hey, what would the cost be for, you know, twelve thousand, fifteen thousand, what would that look like?
The buildings are definitely modern, but they're beautiful, they're beautiful.
Just out of curiosity, is there an updated image of what the library is gonna look like?
Well, they've got this schematic out there.
There, okay.
I can, I can find out for you, see if I can get you one.
Not the schematic, what's the, the composition drawing?
The London drawing, a picture of it's gonna lie in.
Is there any more discussion?
Again, I really like that they were willing to do the landscaping, the initial landscaping.
Are they gonna have any of these buildings, so just for parking wise, is it, are we gonna have a parking lot?
So.
On the grounds with it? Is there room?
There is room, there is room, and then some of the other ones, you'll actually see where they kinda configure it in. But the way that the lot is set up and the way that Bill actually took me around, the lot is shaped kinda funny. So we would kinda have to set up parking that would probably have to go on the side of Maple Street, and the building, he would, you would have to come up the side of Maple Street. We could also possibly look into coming, coming around the other way too. And I think that that's why a lot of people were asking about the traffic study, how is that gonna impact? And what the parking is gonna look like, and are we gonna allow parking one maple to, on both sides or on one side?
With the traffic study, there's only so many options that we have, the size of the streets and parking, it's not like, it's not like we can change a whole lot there, it kinda is what it is.
Is.
If that street is extremely too narrow, I was saying the other day, with the SIP line stuff on those streets, it's, it's not, it's not good, you know, people never mind.
Where exactly is the lot?
So, you know, where the old armory, you know, where we call it Bill's old office, it's on Maple Street, so it's, it's right behind, right behind that, that little small building on Maple Street. So the lot, if you, if you kinda look at it going this way, the building, the building is here, but the lot actually goes over further and, and kinda goes back, and then it comes around the line, comes out, and then goes back this way. So that's why it's, yeah, it's kinda, yeah, it's kinda funny shape.
Because really, if you think about it, if, because parking is gonna be, it's gonna be a serious issue, anyway that we look at it. The only other option for us really is to purchase that back part. The part that the city doesn't own, but before we jump into purchasing it, we need to see where the property line is. Because for all we know, what we've seen with a lot of houses in Pocahontas is that there are a lot of wraparound lots, where they stuck a house somewhere, but there's a lot that goes from the side of the house all the way around to the back of it, where there's just basically a house in the middle of somebody else's lot.
Can I ask you a question? I know you're all in a work session.
Oh, no, this work session, we were allowing public comment.
So in regard to the parking, was that included in the bids for everybody to identify parking spaces?
Some.
On-site versus street?
Some. Now, Ms. Matthews, correct me if I'm wrong. When you all had the meeting, that was a topic of discussion?
It was, it was definitely a topic of discussion, and when we actually walked down there, you know, they kinda figured, tried to figure out where they could turn the building and what they could do as far as parking. Since that one building is still going to be standing there, we had to try to figure out how we were gonna set up the parking. And that's why when everybody was going through, they wanted to know how far the one side of the building, how far the lot went. It actually goes farther than what you think, but it just, it just has that weird, it has that weird like Tetris shape to it.
And a hump.
And a hump.
So parking may not be included on any of these bids, parking spaces, or maybe they may be.
So the one that I know, there was one guy, he didn't make it to the, to the bidding meeting. And I was just walking down the street and saw them looking, so you know, I was being nosey, asking him, you know, what was doing down there? He didn't look, he didn't look like he was from here. And he did have an extended conversation with me about where parking could go. It's just a matter of really the city telling them, this is where we want parking to go, but we have to keep in mind that parking is going to take away some of our square footage for the building. And that's why we'll probably have to cut back on that gym.
Gym.
I know I keep preaching about gym size, but we'll probably have to cut back on the gym size because that's the only way we're gonna offset the parking issue.
And some of these have like a lot of classrooms that I don't think are necessary as well, that we can cut back on if they're gonna be, they're gonna have several classrooms at the library.
Because I want a swimming pool, but I know that's not really.
We don't want a pool.
The overhead of having a pool would be entirely too much.
Yes.
Yeah, we shag man, and dirt pool is only open three days a week.
Right.
I mean, they can't find light card and stuff, and that's, that's counting money, so, and state money.
So the next one is Mann's Woodward. And just bear with me, because this one is, is a little larger.
I'm gonna just say this while you open it, they were too expensive.
That's it?
Five million dollar construction.
Yeah.
What was your suggested budget for location for the whole thing?
Ms. Matthews?
It was five million.
Five million. And so the one company that said only eight thousand square feet given that budget?
His original, so his based off of, if he went with twenty-four thousand square foot, and that was Jonathan Selwell, was actually based off of, it was a eight million dollar budget. And that's how, that's how it said three hundred, in the proposal, it's three hundred square feet. So if you kinda look at that one, could that be an option if we, if we scaled back the square footage?
I did like that they have a big thing.
So some of the pictures for Mann, Mann's and Woodward, I can't really tell if they're like schematics for us, or if it's for someone else.
Yeah, I was just wondering the same thing.
That's why it's so high.
Yeah, I can't, I can't really tell, and it doesn't look like, to me, it doesn't look like Pocahontas, if, if, so I can't really say that that's what it would look like, that's with the parking, because we know that the parking there, we can't have that many parking spaces.
And if you really looked in it, there was no protection for like generators, or AC units, or, or anything like that. That wasn't included. None of those extra things that we're gonna need in an area that floods was included in this proposal. They had that gym, it's nice on page fifteen, but that's too big for us.
So when we talk about gym sizes, just so we have an idea, are we talking elementary, middle, high school?
Middle.
Well, we're definitely not talking Pocahontas High.
No.
Now, Pocahontas Elementary, it was a, it was multi-purpose.
First, okay.
Because their gym is also their cafeteria, so you're talking about with the doors folded back and the doors split up.
Yeah, I see it as something similar size to what we had at the Armory.
Okay, and that was, that was middle school?
That's, that's my vision.
What I'm trying to figure out is, I feel like the gym at the middle school was bigger than that. We're not talking, the gym in the middle school had rosewards, it had room for chairs, but it was long.
Well, the side of the basketball court is ninety-four foot long, fifty feet wide, so I mean.
So that's what we want.
We wanted to be a little bit, you know, you wanted some room on the side.
Salines. So are we talking, so I, I'm, if I'm looking at Salisbury Salvation Army, the old Salvation Army on Oak Street, are we talking the front, what they call the front gym, when you first go in, that was, that was the gym, did it look like that one?
We just want them to be able to play full court.
Full court, and bleachers on.
Room for chairs.
Chairs, no bleachers, just, just chairs.
I mean, I would, I would roughly guess.
Hundred twenty-five feet long, about sixty-five feet wide.
Yeah, roughly.
No recreation in general, any city leaves that type of thing in the gym, or would it just be?
I would really like to see a multi-use gym. I would like to see them be able to do indoor soccer there as well, because we don't have indoors, right?
So the beauty, years ago, or when I was kid, we played indoor soccer and stuff at the middle school in the city, and the county built the recreation center in Snow Hill, they stopped letting Pocahontas use the schools for those programs. Recently, in the past couple of years, to help with Lori Becker and the Future Warriors program, they're back in those schools now. But I don't wanna hold my breath that it's not gonna be taken away at some point, you know, so it's a viable option for us to always make sure that we have a area for the new Pocahontas, because the county repulsed, shuts that door again on us, we're gonna be back where we've been for the past fifteen years.
And build a beautiful building.
And to your question, I, I see men's basketball, youth basketball leagues, I see volleyball, I see a lot of the things that we had in Pocahontas before that we took advantage of, and many took advantage of, that kinda went away with the consolidation of the recreational facilities in Snow Hill. They should have done that like the library system had one in each major city, but that's not what happened, so I see this as an opportunity to give back the recreational opportunities that we had.
And I think that we want Worcester Red and Future Warriors to continue doing what they're doing. We just wanna make sure that there is always going to be a space for it to happen here.
Absolutely.
Because we've seen a lot of different places in other municipalities build these buildings, and they knew that they were gonna want something specific to happen there, but they left it out.
And the biggest beauty of the Future Warriors is, is some of the programs, you know, are for after-school, but I would say eighty-five percent of the programs are, when school gets out, they get rid of those programs, and they typically don't end until people get off work, so it's, it's, like kids in Snow Hill, they go to Worcester County Red Facility for that after-school program, and it's kinda like, you know, something we need to do.
So if you go to page eighty-one, that shows the, the.
While we're going there, why did they have a kitchen?
So the kitchen, that can be, that can be discussed, because when we say kitchen, are we talking commercial kitchen, or are we talking warming kitchen?
I don't think we need one at all.
I don't think we need one at all.
Okay.
I think we do.
I feel we do.
I think, and I, and here's, and here's, and I don't think we need a commercial kitchen.
Okay.
I don't think we need anything like they have at Lynn Haven Baptist Church, or any of those, we don't need that. But I think if we had a facility where we can keep food warm, and on the, we have caterers in, because you know, this, we'll be a community center.
Center.
I envision using it for awards, bankwits, and rentals, and all kinds of things. And if we can make it caterer, not only caterer friendly, but also musician friendly, I think it would be, it would behoove us.
How, what was the size of the kitchen in the old firehouse?
They, that, I don't know, I don't know. But when I say a warming kitchen, just, you know, the basics, your refrigerator, your microwave. We wanna stay away from a hood system, definitely wanna stay away from that, definitely wanna have an ice maker. And, you know, do we wanna go with beverage? You know, I think we need to have some sort of water and, and like there as well. But we need to have some sort of design where it's gonna be caterer friendly.
Well, I, I agree with you, but I'm, I wanna say this, so it's on record right now, and I think we'll all agree. We know about accumulated depreciation with those, that type of equipment, and the city has got to be committed to keeping that stuff up.
So with that being said, a commercial kitchen is not in our, that's not, that's not in our best interest.
No, that opens up a whole other can of worms, but you know, ice maker, refrigerator, we don't.
Well, the kitchen in the old, in the old firehouse, it wasn't wide, but it was long. It went down the whole, it went down the whole side of the, of the dining hall.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't.
And the other thing with the commercial kitchen is then you feel like you gotta do more with the kitchen to get the bang for your buck, and that's, that causes more staffing, more, more costs, more headaches.
Yep.
So a warming kitchen versus a commercial kitchen?
I mean, I'm not saying don't have a couple stoves in there, I'm not saying that. If, if we're going that route, I'm not saying don't have a couple stoves in there, because we do have to think like it's twenty-twenty-five,
Yeah.
and recognize that everybody's not gonna play basketball, everybody's not gonna play soccer, everybody's not gonna be playing indoor hockey. Some people are gonna be wanting to learn how to cook, they're gonna be wanting to learn how to sew.
And maybe even economic development somewhere along the line, I don't know how things are here.
It's interesting you say that. We went, we went to a facility in Cambridge, and if you ever have the opportunity to do it, I strongly suggest it. It's the old Phillips building right on the highway.
The can.
The old Cannon place, and one of the things they have in there, they have two test kitchens, and it's not related to Phillips Foods, it's the Phillips Building. And these are city-funded, and they use that as an economic incubator. And as I was there, it was a cook, you can go in and rent it for a week, a month, you know, whatever you wanna do. And there was a startup in there doing cookies, and another startup was doing soups and stuff to go. So, you know, there's, there's room for that, and maybe we can expand into that, but in the initial stages of this, I think we need to, to keep our scope tight, and, and not open ourselves up to the added cost. I think we can spend that money on services and keep riding the ball here.
And, and I also believe that if we do this right, we can always expand this building.
Yes.
But it has to be done right. It can't be, I'm gonna say it's, you know, it can't be, it can't be done like the police station. It can't, and, and our fire hall is beautiful, but when you really think about it, will there ever be any expansion there? It can't, because they're literally right back to houses. So we can always expand, but we just need to make sure that when we start, we're doing it right so that we can.
Can expand.
Right, and you know, even though that is a community center, we're gonna, I, I see this thing often different to, not, no, well, no, sorry, different audience, but having a different purpose. Having, it won't be a conflicting interest there. If you wanna go catering and you need all that, then we do have that facility available in Pocahontas, you know? When we get to play basketball, let's do the rec center.
Just like you said, like the, not everybody does, so there is a chance, I'm sorry. So there is a chance to be in there, hey, and do a cooking demo glass, learn how to make cookies, hey, and then sell them for a dollar, or something, people coming through from the basketball game that's in the other room, you know what I mean? There's always an opportunity for something else to go on in there.
Absolutely.
You're doing a lot of writing, you're gonna send us our, you're gonna send us your notes when.
It's the only way I can keep up. So there, on page eighty-one, as the mayor spoke, their total cost, it, it's too expensive. We're already deep into the budget, it's already at one point one, and that's not including any building costs whatsoever, it's just the A and E.
Moving on.
We're moving on to the next one.
So the next one is Moya Design Partners.
Moya?
Moya, Moya.
They gonna get, well, we got money.
Well, it's funny you say that. They don't really give. No, there's no breakdown at all.
They don't give, they don't give any reverse pricing at all.
No, none.
It's like, trust me.
I mean, they have.
I wouldn't, I'll tell you later.
There's, there's nothing really we can go off of. I mean, there's pictures, there's, you know, but there's nothing hard that we can, we actually have here that we can move forward.
All right.
And there's start time.
Yeah.
It, that was, I was just a little, you know, why's it gonna take you that long to plan?
Alright, so let's get rid of that one. The next one is Wheeler Goodman and Mask, WGM.
I like, or you, matter of fact, you go ahead, you go ahead.
This is, I like this one. One, they were very honest in what could be done for our budget, and they actually gave two options of what we could do. A timeline, and they actually gave us some sort of vision. There's actually a picture of what it looks like from Maple Street and, um, Walnut. And it actually, you know, shows, shows us some of what the inside would look like.
I like that all construction administration was included in it, so we won't have to ask questions. Um, I like their, um, I like their strong price, their strong cost control. Um, I like that they're backing it up, they're guaranteeing it, and I like the fact that we had the design build option. And then we had the design build, um, the design bid build, and we had the design build, um, and it gave us a cost for both of them. And they use, um, real-time contract.
That's true, mm-hmm.
I like that.
And if you can see on, uh, page twenty and twenty-one, that gives you, uh, twenty, yeah, twenty and twenty-one, it gives you a view of what they, of what the interior would possibly look like. And as well as the, um, exterior. And it kind of gives you an idea of what the parking would look like. So, this is one of the ones that does give us something to look at as far as parking.
If I remember right, the rendering, it was very similar to the high school.
Mm-hmm.
And there's a continuance of flow there, there's a continu-, a thematic bar.
Mm-hmm.
And if you look at one, like the schematics on page twenty, I mean, if you, you got, it's two multipurpose rooms, and I, I know I said it, but the library. So, if people wanna have a, a kitchen or something, there's, you can throw it in one of those rooms.
Mm-hmm.
I do, I do wanna see the gym a little bit more compact.
Mm-hmm.
But I can't say, yeah, I can't say, I like that we have a fit, it, it made room for a fitness center. Nobody else did.
No.
And that was something that we definitely said we wanted because, yeah. But again, with fitness equipment, you also have to keep up on that as well.
Mm-hmm.
It has to be a long-term commitment of the city because what you, you don't want rusted equipment. Especially down here where it's set, right near by the river.
Yeah.
Just put Bowflex machine in there, call it in.
And it has a pantry, so if they wanted, if, if it came to the point where we started collecting food or anything like that. For, you know, we did, uh, yeah, food giveaways or anything, we would have the space to-
And it's ready all the longer for-
Mm-hmm, yeah.
This is where that will happen.
Is that another organizational entity within the city putting together that maintenance?
Mm-hmm.
And just to project that budget out and all of that?
Yeah, we've, we've had several discussions about that. That's maintenance, operational expense and all those things. We got involved in that, uh, I guess about a month ago, we got kinda elbow deep in it, so, we're working on it.
The, and the, and the structure of the building is more like what we currently have downtown, more than the modern look.
Mm-hmm.
In my opinion.
I really like that they gave us a design from the northeast view of the corner, the southeast view. And I think that's what we wanted, we really wanted to see, number one, how they would design inside and how outside is gonna look. I'm not saying that this is, this is my one, but what I am saying is, this was definitely done by way of what we were asking for, even with all of Melinda's, um, addendums. Um, and they even put Melinda's addendums in, in the presentation.
And again, the, the one thing that I do appreciate from them is that they actually, they, they knew the square footage we wanted, but they heard the price. And the fact that they based this off of what we could afford versus, okay, we're just gonna give you something because this is what you want.
This is what you want, but you can't afford it.
But you can't afford it, yes, yes. Yes.
Alright, moving on. I like that.
And with these bids, after this meeting, with these bids, what do you all feel about these bids being, um, public?
Yeah, I think so, I know, seeing these-
I think after this meeting, we could go ahead and-
I mean, is it our purpose today to narrow these down to a top three?
Yes, but we can only take consensus.
Yes.
I hope so.
Agree.
And then I think that, but we still possibly should put all of the bids out. Um, y'all know, I've been here for, for some time now. And I remember, um, and Councilwoman Downing would remember, um, when we were bidding out for the restaurant after, um, Johnny Mola. And the bids, the bids never got out to the public and there was never a justification. So, that's why I'm really applauding us really for going through all of these live for everyone to see. Um, but I do know that a lot of people wanted to see the other bids that we did not select. So, I would like to see all of them posted online, but we make it clear what our top, what our top three are. Who will be moving forward by way of consensus.
Randy, I, I don't remember, Ben, help me with this.
Mm-hmm.
The, uh, WGM, did they have a parking aspect to theirs? I don't remember it.
There is not a parking aspect.
I don't remember seeing it on the schematics, or maybe I missed it.
You mean like traffic?
Uh, no, just a parking, um.
Maybe it's because they just show it in the design on page, uh, where they showed like the parking spaces, but-
Oh, yeah, there they are, I got it, yep, thank you. I didn't remember seeing it.
They've done several big projects, so, yeah, it should certainly be my analyst.
I have another question. In terms, you talked about multiple rooms, are any of the spaces, um, expandable? So, you may have a larger room with the removable slide door walls, so you don't have to have all of the separated rooms. I don't know if that is included.
They're all kinda different, but like what we're talking about now is two multipurpose rooms kinda side by side. You can also have like a structural wall there, you can have a sliding wall, make that room-
That's a very, that's a really good point. Like today, I was at the, uh, the job fair here in town, the, the Maryland, uh, Economic Development put on. And they, they had it at the fire hives in that community center, and they used a divider there for, for half the room, and it worked out nicely.
And ultimately, we could do that with the gym. I do wanna see it a little bit smaller.
Mm-hmm.
But we could have the dividers in the gym, so then that does give us more space.
And multiple things for-
Well, it gives you multiple revenue opportunities. Um, not everybody's gonna have eighty people, maybe they've got twelve. Um, maybe it's the Shriners Club, and it's a place to meet, you know, and, and, um, and they're too big for one of the rooms, but yeah.
I think with this one, um, one of his, one of his, um, designs. He actually shows where one of the classrooms is split by a divider, so it, that is, that can be an option.
And dividers are very expensive.
Expensive.
Yeah.
Um, Councilwoman Downing and I went to a banquet some years ago at the First Baptist Church of Salisbury. And it was held in their multipurpose, um, it was held in their multipurpose room. You can't tell walking in that it's a multipurpose, that it's a multipurpose room, that it can be converted into a gym. You know, they had a, they, they had a kitchen there, they had a stage, and all of those things outside of the kitchen, right? But all of the things that they had in there for the banquet were easily, um, broken down and moved out. So, potentially, you know?
One other question. And I'm asked of all of these because I just went through this process in my hometown, we just got a brand new multipurpose community center built.
Speaking of which, I got some questions to ask you before, before you get to the weekend.
But one of the things was about, uh, energy, efficiency, conservation, that type of thing. And making sure that you've addressed that because buildings, that's a big cost.
Yeah.
Well, over the weekend, we met with, uh, Const- Constellation and also with, who was the other, DP and, uh, Delmarva Power.
Mm-hmm.
And that's one of the things that I know that, that I talked with her about, about, uh, the, their programs and the like. And I believe they're gonna follow up with Randy.
Yeah, with energy.
About that.
So, just to add to that, Delmarva Power is going to help us with our energy stuff. Um, we had a, um, in August, we went to the MML Summer Symposium, and someone was there from Pepco. And he was like, oh, yeah, how are things going on the shore? So, you know, I start complaining about, about those winter energy bills. I mean, I really, you know, socked it to him. And so, he put me in contact with somebody, um, concerning it about how we can even, um, the city will even get rebate. If we, um, if we allowed them to, um, basically install the, um. Yeah, y'all know what I'm saying.
And I think we can, I think we can help a little off that with the solar plant, or so, the solar panels that we had all done small. Of my memory, I think we're allowed to put like eight or ten properties on connected to that, and, uh-
It was, it was eleven, and we still had, we took some off, and we, we all, we still had like two or three that were available.
And maybe consider, I know a lot of our buildings here are solid brick, but how would we use a mix with some lighting? So, students or whoever will to identify each. So, there's something else you make a little about doing, designing, do anybody, maybe is that it?
So, again, with, um, with WGM, the, the other thing is they, they gave us two different proposals. One with a design, uh, a design bid build and then a design bid proposal. The difference between the two is about approximately ninety-eight thousand dollars. Um, and when you go with the design bid proposal, um, it's, it's really the preferred, preferred option. Because it's, like mayor said, it's real-time pricing, and it ensures that the budget and the scope of the project remain reconciled, and it cuts down on the price of the project. And also with that design bid, the design build option, you take out the cost of having to bid. And also, it cuts down on the timeframe that it will take to actually build it. We know in that respect, we will actually get a building, not just A and E, we have some plans, but no end.
They've done a lot of work, um, they've done a lot, I don't know if y'all saw it, but they've actually done a lot of work in this county. So, they are familiar with, um, they are familiar with the look of this county. Um, because the Worcester County Library that they did, and which one is this? Does, does anybody know? It might be, it might be Boroughlands. Is that Boroughlands Library?
It is.
Might be Ocean Park. With that, I think that's in Ocean Pines.
Ocean Pines or Ocean City.
I don't think it's Ocean Pines. Ocean Pines doesn't have, Ocean Pines has a very low front.
Or is it Ocean City? Cause Ocean City kinda low front.
I think this is Ocean Cities. Well, maybe it says it here. Well, and they did, they've done work at the Career and Tech Center.
Are there any other discussions with this one? Moving on. The next one is Dub, sorry, G W W O.
Moving on nothing.
No.
They keep good paper trail, but. I hope you quiet.
You already said it, man.
Yeah.
I don't have any questions right now.
Okay. Anybody, everybody shaking their head? No, okay.
They got you, boy.
Alright, next is, make sure I pronounce this correctly.
Routh.
Routh.
Highest fees and longest timeline.
They do a good job of environmental work.
It is one of the main concerns that I've, I've actually heard, not even just being here in Pokemote, that there are timelines for completing. Um, things have not been up to par. So, if we're talking timeline-wise, this would not be, this would not be the one.
Next.
Jesus, you said seven thirty, girl, it's only six thirty.
I know, next.
Alright. The last, the last one is C Ralph, C Roth Architect and Design.
Oh, yeah, but I got it as big as it can be.
I moved out a lot of cons for them.
Who's gonna clean all that glass?
I did like their milestone.
Yes.
Their milestone breakdown, but.
Can you see, will you be able to see the river? Like if you go on second or third floor?
Yeah, a part of it.
Now, mind you, that eventually there's gonna be thirty-seven townhomes in front, so will you still be able to see the river?
No.
Just a part on the very, on the, what is it, the west, on the west, on the west side of it. I know, the community garden blocks, it's, I know.
Now, while the design is nice.
It is nice.
The price tag is not.
Twenty million dollars.
No. That's why I say, who's gonna clean all that glass?
One good wind starting, that's gone everywhere.
And there really isn't, just look, go back through this.
And I mean, when you think about it and you look at their, um, you look at their design, and we look at, um, the one that we talked about extensively. They're basically have the same, they basically have the same exact thing.
Mm-hmm.
Nick, and they're talking about it too, with like, uh, I know Salem United Church is right there too, the big parking lot. Um, might be able to work out some kinda deal with them to, uh, for more parking as well.
That's a great, that's a good call, that's a good call.
Throw, throw them some money.
Dyarsons on it.
Yeah, whatever it is.
That's a great call right there.
Yeah, I do, I think so too, rent, you know, rent, rent some spaces.
Yeah.
Cause they don't really have people in that parking lot till Sunday.
Yeah.
And when they do the little, they do like lunches sometimes, but-
And they do stuff at night and several things, but, I mean, fifteen cars will cover most.
Especially if they work on this side closest to, yeah.
And, and the, I, I guess it's right there, so the back side of the parking lot is furthest away from the church, which would also be the closest one to the church. So, it's kinda like-
It works.
Yeah.
And the other thing I do not like about this drawing is who wouldn't want a kitchen next to a fitness center?
Yeah.
I mean, that's trivial, right, but-
And they're working out.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to, I'm trying to, I'm trying to make it on my own, too.
You're, you're earning your fried chicken.
And another down-
Dangle it in.
Another downfall on page eight, the working drawings would take at least twelve months. We haven't even gotten to. And then seven months, um, for review of the work, so we almost, a year and a half, two years before we even get started.
Yep.
Yeah.
But I did like that they weren't doing a lot.
Yes.
No, I've never, I've, I've noticed that too, I've never even heard of it.
Broke on page nineteen to this one, they have a picture of the lot right now, I didn't know if you saw this.
Oh, yes, I did see that, thank you.
And I also like the glass, um, the glass foyer. I really like that, so regardless of who we go with, it would be really nice if they could put that in the, oh no, you know what, it's Pocahontas. I'm sorry, we, we gotta be realistic. We gotta be realistic, it would be busted every time we turn around.
So the way I see things, and Randy, I'm gonna ask you, uh, would your top three include GMB, Selway? And, uh, Wheeler Goodman, WGM? And Becca, do you want to throw Becca Morgan in the mix?
Yes, my top three were actually Becca Morgan, GMB, and WGM, Wheeler Goodman, and Mask. With possibly Quillen, David Quillen being the, the fourth.
My tops were, um, Wheeler Goodman, Mayis, that's number one. Number two, I had David Quillen, and number three was GMB.
There's some commonality there.
I had Becca Morgan, no particular word. Becca Mor, Becca Morgan, GMB, Wheeler Goodman, and my fourth would be Jonathan Selway.
So I'm gonna do three or four.
I mean, I'm not aforesaid to do four myself, um, it'll give the public more to look at. And get, hopefully get more input from them, and, and I think, like this is, is such a rough draft, it's kinda hard to be like compare them. Because there's so many, there's so many changes.
And it's so many pages.
Yeah, it is.
It's so broad right now, you know what I'm saying, and, and I get the idea of it or whatever, but like, it's so broad right now. And, and we haven't had much community, community input on it. I feel like, uh, once they see it and what, and visualize it, they're gonna, you're gonna, we're gonna receive a lot more questions and input from the community, so.
So Ms. Matthews, what's your timeline for us? When do you need us to make a decision?
I have enough information to, for the grant, that's, that's not a, that's not, yeah, that's, that's not a problem. Um, but we, depending on when we're looking to, go ahead, Scott.
Does the grant have any stipulations on like?
It, we have to show an estimated cost of at least the, uh, the A and E fees, so we have to have at least that.
And do we have to break ground by a certain time, or?
Not necessarily break ground, but the grant you have to spend down two years, and it's awarded in December.
So we have two years to spend on it.
So you need us to make a decision in November?
October, God. This is October.
I mean, we do, we don't, we don't have any, after, we meet next week, we don't meet for the rest of the month.
I was trying to spur along, yeah, I guess we do need to do something next month.
Let me, let me.
You say the first meeting in November?
Let me double check, and let me email everybody, and then I'll get back to you.
Listen, we need to set dates and times, cause you know how.
I know, I know, I know. Four.
When is the first meeting in November?
I think it was January.
November, should I remember it there?
Said again. The total max that, um, CDVG will give out is eight hundred thousand. And based on, based on the criteria, based on, um, different things, they could also award in a different, what they call a different bucket. They could award more in different things.
I know, oh, I remember hearing quite some time ago, Chrisville had, uh, what's it called, the, uh.
Art Stroll?
No, the building they had, what do you call it, their, their rec center.
Oh, the cent, like the center, that's what you call that?
They had the Salvation Army.
Salvation Army or the center?
No, they have a center, it's right by the, it's right by the docks.
They have an old one, I used to sit there and play soccer.
They just renovated.
And they, they, it was a million dollar project, and did they ever do that? Because I, I know it was.
Oh, you're talking about the old one?
Yeah.
The old, uh, no, they never.
And it fell through, and I knew they had got grants and stuff, I was just curious as to what fails that we make sure.
It was, well, another part of it was, they had two, so they had their old armory, but they had another rec center in Chrisville. And they decided to go ahead and work on that old rec center, um, versus working on the armor. Because I don't, I know that they wanted to save it.
Armor is in bad shape, dude.
Yeah, but it was in, it was in worse shape than ours. When we were talking about potentially saving it, theirs was in worse shape.
It was in worse shape and there were still these.
Yeah. So I think they just realized it was more feasible for them to do the other one, I don't think it had anything to do, no, they got the funding for it.
That's what I thought.
They did, they got the funding for it, but they never did the work.
Well, we can't help them, let's, let's help us.
Well, if it, if it had a two-year minimum on it, and they didn't jump in.
Cause you can't, yeah, cause you can only, they only allow for you to do so many extensions, um, before it runs out. And then they, they recoup the money, and one of the things with CDVG, DHCD, is wherever they can get money to pull, they'll pull it back to give to someone else, so. So let me, before I give a definitive, let me double check the grant to make sure, and then I will email everybody immediately and let you know.
So you got your margin for the four to put out?
Yes.
Just the fact, just the fact we have to here spend the money eliminates quite a few of these proposals that we had.
I, you know, the, the ones that have, that roll defensive timeline, you have my preference.
And are we putting out, is it consensus that we are putting out the bids, all eleven, we are?
Well, I put out, maybe, maybe you should just do the four.
Just the four.
And there may be certain information, so you might need to actually go look through it to make sure there isn't certain information that it can't be put out publicly.
Okay.
Do you want that in addition to the bid time, or do you just want the bid time and that's it?
I think we include the bid time, for sure.
You the expert at this moment, we don't know.
That's why I'm asking. No expert, I was giving.
What did that man, what did that man say? What did that, what is his name, Brooks Williams?
Yeah, that was one of the best things, speeches I've ever had.
So let me.
Last thing I'll throw out there is with the dividers, the gym size, I would rather be on the bigger side and the smaller side. Because you can use that for other things and just.
I see, I see the dividers, uh, more showing the classroom sections than I do in the gym.
Yeah.
I think for both, well, you know, those big, they've got that big net. Is it possible that we do a walk around with these four people? And we do, we record the walk around, and we post it online, because none of us were at your, um, your pre-bid meeting.
Yeah, do we invite them back in for a second, Ryan, that's, that one? That way we can ask them, you know, clear up some questions. I think most of us have questions on all of them.
So let me just make sure, Scott, starting with you, what's your four?
My four were, let me figure that out. My four were Becca Morgan, GMB, Wheeler Goodman, and then my fourth would be, and the first three weren't any worse. My fourth would be Jonathan Selway.
Okay.
My other side.
Pretty much the same.
I just said three, um, Wheeler Goodman, uh, David D. Quinlan, and then GMB.
Oh, the same.
As?
Becker, definitely, Jim.
Wheeler Goodman.
Yeah.
I have the same theory, and then I also like Fisher.
Fisher.
Your thoughts, Andrew? Do you have your thoughts?
Do we need a motion to adjourn, a work session?
I know your agenda had council comments, mayor comments.
Anybody have any comments? No, okay. Oh, we do have public, we do have public, we do have, we do have a point, a place for comments from the public, so you could speak if you'd like to. We greatly appreciate it. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Make the motion to adjourn, second.
All those in favor use the sound aye. Those that oppose, you have the same right. Thank you, everybody, have a good night.
I made me some chili this morning while I'm out, that chili's in the crock pot right now.